Good evening. I'm John Wensky, chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329, and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection's website. Thank you to Shrewsbury Media Connection and Liz Popilowsky for their assistance with tonight's broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on SMC's website and their YouTube channel between now and our next scheduled meeting on Wednesday, November 6th. The first item on our agenda is public participation. Tonight, we have not received any requests to speak. Public participation is available to any and all residents that wish to address the committee regarding concerns pertaining to policy, budget, and performance of the superintendent. In the future, if anyone wishes to speak at public participation, they should contact the chairperson prior to the next meeting. The next item on the agenda is chairperson and members' reports. Colleagues, anything to report? I actually have two things to report. One, I did attend a community partnership breakfast on Thursday, October 10th, connecting business and community leaders with our high school students for potential career and technical education opportunities. It was very well attended, very well organized. I really enjoyed the student testimonials about the impacts of some of the programs we already have set up, like the Lunch and Learns and kind of job shadowing. So it was great to hear the students talk about their experiences as well as the businesses and the impact that the students have had on their businesses as a result of these programs. And I mean, it's just one example of the many things that we're doing to try to connect students with CTE opportunities. So thank you for that. Thank you to Jane Lazzott for organizing that, as well as her team. It's well done. The other announcement I have is that I am very excited to announce that on Monday evening, the Shrewsbury School Committee and the Shrewsbury Par-Educator Association reached a tentative agreement on a successor three-year contract that will cover the 2024-25, 2526, and 2627 school years. We are very appreciative of the partnership that we've, we have with the SPA in reaching this deal. A big thank you to SPA leadership team, including the president, Noreen Christie, who's here in attendance tonight. Thank you for being here, as well as Vice President Megan Tower and the MTA representative, Shawna Weston, as well as their entire negotiating team that represented various disciplines within the paraprofessional roles across the district. Also, many thanks to our negotiating team on the school committee, obviously Ms. Fritz, myself, and Dr. Sawyer. I've got a long list of people to thank. Chris Girardi for some great work with Finance and Operations, Meg Belcito with Student Services, Barb Malone, and Lindsay Sischowski from our HR team and our legal team, Joe Proctor and Sarah Spatafor, as well as my school committee colleagues here for your guidance and work to help us get this, get this done. The negotiation spanned 18 meetings across 10 months, with our first meeting back in December 18th and wrapping up this past Monday. Both parties, I felt, were very collaborative and transparent about the needs and challenges. And I think of the three cycles that I've been a part of, this was, was by far the best, for sure. So, you know, our par educators are pivotal part of our success in this district. They have really difficult and challenging jobs every day, and we really appreciate their commitment to the success of the students across the district. So thank you so much, and I would like to open it up. Any comments, Ms. Fritz?
I would also like to thank everyone who is participating. I was not there in attendance, so, Noreen, I want to thank you. We've done this a lot of times. And it, it was a very good negotiation. There was a lot of back-and-forth conversation, and I think their, the SPA team really helped us understand some of those real pain points and areas that we needed to focus on. That was very, very helpful. And I want to thank this team, because we all really work together to make sure things are going to where they should be. And again, our par professionals are very, our par educators are pivotal to what we do as a district, and we couldn't do the work without them. So thank you again to your team, and I'm very glad we're done.
Thank you. Any further comments, colleagues? Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. Let me, let me add my thanks. It was really nice to have that wrapped up on Monday. Now, the SPA will look to ratify the contract, and then, once they do, presuming they do, the school committee will then vote potentially as soon as your meeting, two weeks from this evening. That'll depend on the timeline, how that works out, and we'll be able to start. I know Mr. Girardi and his team have already begun the work around retroactive pay. That will reflect the agreement, presuming both parties ratify it. I would echo all the sentiments that were shared earlier by Mr. Wensky and Ms. Fritz. I'm deeply appreciative of the work that the negotiating team for the SPA did, as well as the team supporting the school committee. And, you know, these are really incredibly important roles in our school district. And every time I visit a school, you can't help but see the impact that these par educators are making on supporting students, supporting staff, and making our schools work well. So I'm glad to have that tentative agreement, and we'll look forward to the ratifications in the near future. In addition to that, I just want to mention that the Friday prior to the holiday weekend, a couple of weeks ago, we had our Professional Development Day. A lot of our, certainly curriculum and instructional leaders, administrators, did an excellent job planning an important day of learning for our, both our professional and par educator staff. There were a variety of focus areas that are connected to our strategic priorities that you approved our yearly goals at your last meeting, but the, everything from a focus on literacy across those grades that are implemented in the new program, a focus on our Positive Behavior Intervention and Support PBIS program that we were able to share with the par educators in the morning, as, as well as a variety of things that were done on a departmental basis. But those professional learning days are really important for our continued success as, as a district to implement the various strategic priorities and goals that, that we've set. So I appreciate everyone's hard work to make that a successful day. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
Great. Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. It's with the Shrewsbury High School Student Advisory Committee. Under Massachusetts Education Reform Act, school districts are required to have a student advisory committee consisting of five high school students who are elected by the student body. The SAC is required to meet with the school committee during the year to review various issues or concerns to the student body. Mr. Andrew Smith, who's here, is the advisor to the SAC, and I'd like to welcome them up to speak with us now. If you just want to do introductions before we start, it'd be good. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Strickland, and I'm honored to serve as chairperson for the Shrewsbury High School Student Advisory Committee during the 2024 to 2025 school year. Thank you for having us here tonight. My fellow members will introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Emmanuel Yu, sophomore.
I'm Kelvin Sango, junior.
I'm Gathry Iyer. I'm a junior.
I'm Noah Chonk. I'm a senior.
We will start with our student life section. With the start of the school year, new opportunities and challenges have arisen in the SHS community. For student general feelings, while my senior peers and I are immersed in college applications, leadership roles, and challenging course loads, freshmen are adjusting to high school. The Mentor Volunteer Program is providing freshman homerooms with junior and senior mentors to ease their transition. And the abundance of co-curricular options are enticing underclassmen to get involved.
Seniors are off to an exciting start this year, with senior events already underway and college app deadlines fast approaching. The senior pizza party was held in the Senior Plaza on October 5th, and all who wore their senior T-shirts were given free admission to the homecoming football game right after. Over the summer, many of us attended the application boot camp, which has helped us to feel better prepared in our search for a school. And the accessibility of English teachers and counselors makes it easy to find help with essays or applications when needed.
Going into the beginning of the school year, juniors are adjusting to elevated workload, new responsibilities, and busier schedules. Additionally, vending machines have become very popular, particularly among athletes and students who stay behind after school. The shared cart, a resource that the health teacher at MSF has created, provides a place for students to donate unopened food throughout the day, which can be taken by any student. The SHS community has given incredibly positive response, and every, every Friday, leftovers are donated to the senior standard food pantry.
Another year at our high school has just begun, and it is taking time to adjust, with many juniors only starting to get used to their AP classes now. Many have reported that they're still working on acclimating themselves to keep up in the classes that they're taking this year. However, something that has helped us along on the five unusually hot days this fall and will continue to help us on the warm days in the future are the air conditioners in the third-floor hallways, which we are excited to have up and running on the days we need them.
As our second-year students come back to SHS, many view it as a continuation of their freshman year. Sophomores are getting used to their new classes and schedules, just like every other student, except now without the hurdle being introduced to an entirely new school. Sophomore year is now an opportunity for once-first-year students to involve themselves more in clubs, sports, and extracurriculars, as well as to continue to capitalize on resources being provided by our school. In addition, sophomores can begin to consider what to prioritize and pursue, whether it be starting driving courses or thinking about their college admissions journey in junior and senior year.
Phone policy. The new phone policy at SHS is that the use of cell phones and earbuds/headphones in classrooms is prohibited, including in directed studies and while in the media center. The policy has just started to pick up and has been implemented throughout the school, with many teachers reporting that it has been helping students stay more on task while in class. However, many students raise the question of why it is required to be implemented while in the media center and in directed studies. Many believe that although a phone policy should be used while learning, being in a study as well as residing in the media center for a study are where it is at a student's discretion to make the choices to do the work they may or may not have. Thus, requiring a student's phone to be placed in a phone pocket while in these locations reduces a student's personal responsibility for their work and removes the option of relaxing and passing time in a study when a student does not have any work to do.
Bus fees. The bus fees are increased by $50, going from $325 to $375 per person. As a result, many families have opted out, and now students now earn rides from their parents. This has increased the amount of students staying behind after school. Many have shown their annoyance at this circumstance, especially those that have parents with jobs far away. Some want to reduce the bus fee, and some question why was raised.
SAT availability. Since the end of the school year, SHS seniors and juniors have been taking advantage of numerous opportunities to take the SAT either at the high school or in a nearby town. That said, many were unable to take the test in August because it was not offered at the high school, with the nearest available testing centers located over 150 miles away from Shrewsbury, effectively closing off the test weeks before the actual signup deadline. On a similar note, the PSAT is unavailable to sophomores for the second year in a row. Despite this, many juniors and sophomores are still showing their excitement and readiness to take the SAT, with the seventh-class prep course being at full capacity this fall.
Overcrowding. High school is once again at full population, with freshmen more than replacing the graduated senior class of 2024 who left the school in May of last year. In a school built for a population of 1,475, the current population of 1,870 is certainly overcrowded. The congestion in hallways is magnified in choke points on all floors where two academic wings meet in a common hallway, causing some, especially the shorter students, to feel uncomfortable, and occasionally leading to tardies when a student is unable to traverse the school within the allotted passing period. Co-curriculars. SHS students continue to further their school participation outside of the classroom.
New and continuing clubs. Currently, we are seeing the beginning of various clubs that formed at the end of last year, including those that vary significantly in what they do. As of right now, there are 82 student organizations in our school, such as Model UN, which was restarted this year, as well as Chemistry Club alongside other competitive and fun activities that have been gaining popularity over the past few years. For example, DECA, which recently had their testing to determine the first phase of selecting who would become a member with over 300 students showing up for that. Additionally, the Activities Fair occurred to promote the many programs within the school, as it gave students an opportunity to advertise their clubs. This year, alongside the creation of various new clubs, it was found helpful to strengthen the Board of Clubs, which enlists the help of our student leaders, as well as Mr. Lane, to ensure our clubs are well-managed and are working to the best of their abilities.
Athletics. With not only a strong start to the school year, we're also having a strong fall season for our athletes. The number of registered athletes is confirmed to be 513 SHS athletes that are participating this fall. Not only that, but having ended the annual Gold Card fundraiser, the SHS athletes were able to make just shy of $56,000. This all goes right to the SHS Athletic Booster Fundraising Club for the athletic department. The money can be reallocated back in the form of requests for teams, both middle school and high school, that gives funding for things such as uniforms and equipment.
All right, we will now go into our Events at SHS section. Shrewsbury High School continues to host a variety of programs and events. Colonial Way. On September 27th, Shrewsbury students swarmed to the annual Colonial Way. Fifty-four honor societies, clubs, and sports teams lined the street with activities and merchandise. In addition to providing exposure and fundings to clubs, students and staff were able to end the night with treats from food trucks and watching the first home game of the football season.
School spirit rally. As per the start of every school year, Shrewsbury High School kicks off its first month of welcoming its students back with the Spirit Rally. This is an event that is able to bring the entire school together to witness a range of events, from teachers competing against students in games, to hearing the freshman getting booed whenever they get mentioned. This event had a great opening ceremony with the singing of the National Anthem, a cheerleading routine, as well as a performance by our SHS Lion Dance Club. Afterwards, we were able to see some students pelt their teachers with dodgeballs, have classes compete against each other in a Hungry Hippo Race, and have our good-old-fashioned relay races and tug-of-war. This was a great and fun event to have our new and returning students experience some school-wide spirit and to skip the last class of the day.
College visits. Since the start of the school year, college admissions officers representing just shy of 90 different colleges have come to present to seniors at SHS. The visits are attended by a wide range of numbers of students from less than 10 to over 100, showing that more popular, as well as more niche destinations, are available. Most of the visits have been structured as a presentation, followed by a Q&amp;A session. But depending on how many students attend, the dynamic ranges from exhibitionist to conversational. Overall, anyone who attends has the opportunity to both learn more about a college generally, as well as get any specific questions answered.
Fall concert. The school's music department was also able to kick off the school year with its very first performance. SHS's Chamber Orchestra, Chamber Choir, Mixed Choir, Treble Choir, and Wind Ensemble all performed on October 8th to a very well-receiving audience. The music choices across all groups were very unique and tasteful, such as the Mixed Choir's performance of Imagine by John Lennon, or how our Chamber Orchestra played the prelude to the 1960s movie Psycho. Overall, the musicianship was excellent, and it was an amazing first performance by all five ensembles.
Thank you for your continuous support for the students of Shrewsbury. We're now open for any questions.
Great. Thank you so much for the report. Colleagues, questions, comments? Ms. Effron?
Yeah, as always, thank you all very much. And it's always good to see some new faces, too. So welcome to the, to the year. A couple of things that you raised that I wanted to just touch base on. Really appreciate your calling out some of the capital needs that we have in the, sort of, the space and air conditioning, right? These, like, physical assets that make the space work or not work as well, and need attention, and certainly has been a focus area for us and will continue to be as we think about not only this unseasonably warm weather that we're enjoying when we're not in a building that is way overcrowded with a lot of people, but thinking about ultimately what is our plan to deal with the high school space issues. So certainly, top of mind, very hard to fix quickly, but appreciate your continuing to, to raise the issue. I continue to be amazed with the number of activities that we have and the engagement that we see from folks. Glad to hear about this Board of Clubs to kind of make sure there's some organizationness and to make, making sure things get, gets, get supported. I have two sort of questions. Maybe I'll start with the first one. Now, you mentioned the college visits, and 90 colleges have already visited. We're, you know, eight weeks into school. What time of day do those happen? And how is it that students can kind of make sure they can attend? Are they during the rolling lunches? Like, how does that, how does that work for students?
So most visits are about an hour long. They occur during any period of the day, really. Students need to tell their teachers that, of the classes that they would be attending, that they'll be out of class the day before to make sure there's no conflicts. And after that, they just leave class and go either to the Career Center or the Presentation Room.
Okay.
They are limited to one a day.
Thank you. So you could have three or four schools, but yours, but, but as a student, you're supposed to pick one. Thank you. That's, that's really helpful. And then I really appreciate that you raised up the issues of bus fees, and certainly something for us to kind of understand, because we made a conscious choice around bus fees last year to kind of hold them. And so I think we have a little bit of follow-up work to do to make sure we understand what has been communicated or not communicated. I certainly, and I don't want to speak for all my colleagues, am concerned about the number of fees that we have, and I'm looking to see how, over time, we can see those go down. So I, I wonder, Dr. Sawyer, if there's some communication charges. If anything, we want the after-school bus to be free and other, other such things to make sure that students have access as best as they could, can. So something for us to follow up on. So again, always good to kind of hear what you're hearing and then what, what we're kind of hoping we see in practice. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Ms. Fritz?
I also want to mention, I think the shared cart is, I think, Calvin, what you called it. I love that, because I know we have heard from, I think maybe from teachers, more around the, you know, there's a lot of food waste right now, and students have to take every portion of that lunch. So I think that's great that we're doing something like that. And again, communication for the public to know and the district to know. And again, around bus fees. I mean, I know we're talking about that as a school committee. Fees are expensive for parents. I know when my children were in school, it's a lot of money for parents to be putting out. So we are definitely being more mindful of that, and we're going to start looking at fees in general, if there's something that we're able to do around the whole fee component in the budget itself. So if you can relay that back to students, we're definitely looking at that.
Of course, of course. Ms. Bishet?
I'd also like to thank you for your report. I really appreciated how you broke it up this year between the different classes and kind of gave us perspective from seniors, juniors, and sophomores. I thought that was really helpful. I did have a question about the no homework weekends and that policy so far, and how do you think it's been rolled out? And how do you think, you know, I know it's only, I think there's been two so far, but just kind of getting the students' perspective on that.
I think people that are particularly of religious affiliation that don't have holidays that coincide with the breaks that we have at the school definitely appreciate the no homework days and no homework weekends when they do help them fully participate in their cultural habits without having to do homework in the back of a church or in the back of a meeting. That's definitely very widely received and very much, people are very grateful for that. There is a problem of when we do have a no homework weekend, there is no test allowed for the following Monday, which in theory sounds great. However, that means that tests that may have been, let's say you have one class Tuesday, one class, one test Monday, then they would both be moved to Tuesday. So sometimes Tuesdays are then overloaded. So it's really a give and take, but I haven't really heard such overwhelming people being like, "Take it away," or "Leave it." So we definitely do appreciate it. But that's the only caveat sometimes.
Thank you.
Also, thank you for your report. It's good to have eyes and ears in the school, because we are not in the school every day. You are, so having you report back to us and giving us this is hugely helpful to us. I do have one question about the SATs and the PSATs. Talk to me a little bit about, for those of you who are, who maybe not were able to take the PSAT. How do you think that affected you? Are you upset about that? Are there other schools in the area that have offered it? How, how are you kind of navigating that process with not being able to take it locally here?
I know I was able to take the PSAT sophomore year because, because there was less interest in it coming out of COVID.
As someone, as someone who hasn't taken the PSAT yet and is going to soon, it's kind of, in my opinion, it's not the greatest thing solely because you don't really get practice before the October SAT, which is the one that's available to us first. And so it's not the greatest thing, but at the same time, you still do get so many more opportunities for the SAT so many times later on throughout the year. So having the PSAT at, like, being available to juniors also works, but there is definitely a disadvantage to not having it, having taken it in sophomore year.
I think another disadvantage, sorry, did I? Okay. When it comes to National Merit Scholarship, being able to take it sophomore and junior year means that you have two tries at getting the National Merit Scholarship that is a very small section of students. But it is something that people in my grade were very grateful to have when we were able to take it both years, because we could see how far we were and study for it and hopefully get some of that distinction to put on our college application.
Yeah, especially those who really, really are striving for the National Merit Scholarship, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I really appreciate your involvement on this committee. Very important for our committee to hear from you on a regular basis. So thank you so much for that. And thank you to your advisor, Mr. Smith, with the work that went into all of this. I think the two things that are top of mind for me, I know it's already been mentioned, one is around, obviously, overcrowding in the high school. We want to hear certainly more about that. And then, you know, over the next several reports, if there are any feedback from the student body. And then around fees. I think we're, with both areas, we're looking to mitigate the pain points around how do we help families, you know, with that? And then, obviously, how do we help students feel more comfortable in the high school? And we know we've got some, you know, things that we'll hopefully hear at the end of the year about whether or not we're eligible for MSBA, you know, support for potentially in the high school. But we appreciate that you called both of those out. So thank you so much. Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
Thank you. Appreciate the report. Thank you for the information, and it's really helpful for the committee, for sure, as well as for myself. In terms of, just to echo some of the comments about the, the bus fee piece, knowing the school committee has held that steady, I think since 2020 was the last time it was raised, want to make sure I understand where that perception's coming from, but also just generally sense that it may be too high. I also want to get a sense, and we'll make sure we provide the school committee with, our ridership overall is not that different. So I'm curious whether or not we have an imbalance and whether our high school ridership is different this year than it was last year in that, that perception that people have. Or sometimes people do sign up, but they don't utilize it for different reasons. And certainly, we did make the decision as a school district, thanks to the school committee putting it into our budget to have the late bus service continue. We were funding that through the ESAR funding that we received as part of kind of COVID grant funds from the, from the federal government.[1543.08] But we did that on a trial basis, it's been very successful. I actually left a meeting today and the buses are waiting outside and it looked like there were a bunch of students who were going to get on, which was great, to make sure that all those different activities that we do have, I want students to have great access to those as best they can, even if they don't necessarily have automobile transportation or a ride on that particular day, whatever it might be, or stay after school for extra help or whatever that might be. That's really important to us to make sure all of our students have an opportunity to participate in the life of the school in those after-school hours as well as during the school day. As far as the PSAT, I know that I've had a couple of conversations with Mr. Buzidlo and, you know, looking at, not for the fall, but, you know, a potential different option that could be fruitful. You know, this is a challenging environment around standardized testing and kind of the post-COVID world and some shifts that have happened. But at the same time, for the reasons that you stated, and I know that, you know, for National Merit, I know it only, it's only when you're a junior that it actually counts towards that. But I know for some students, taking that first time as a sophomore, just get a sense of what the test is like, what to expect, there can be certainly benefit to that. And so if there are ways for us to provide that, we certainly want to look into what those, what those possibilities are. But appreciate you raising that, that question. And, you know, in the August SAT, that was kind of a new, it's relatively new, that date, I believe, in the system. Whether or not that's something that Shrewsbury will be able to do in the future or not, I'm not sure. But, you know, I am certainly aware that it was difficult to find something locally if you wanted to take the test on that date. And so whether or not that's a possibility in a future year or not, I don't know. But that's, I know, again, the administration of all these things is outside. The school coordinates it, but ultimately it's done through the college board, so it's a little bit of a quasi. We have some level of control over some of it and some of it is, we have to meet some certain benchmarks that will be expected around the way that it's given, that require personnel and require a variety of resources. So it's really helpful to hear that perspective around that topic as well as all the others as well. So thank you very much and appreciate the report, looking forward to more as the year goes on.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is also a time-scheduled appointment. It is a report on the future plans of the SHS class of 2024. Each year, the high school administration provides data on the post-high school plans of the most recent graduating class. The principal, Mr. Todd Buzidlo, and Ms. Angie Flynn, who's our Director of School Counseling, will present an overview of the report enclosed in our packet, which provides information regarding what the students plan to do after graduating. Welcome.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for having us tonight and we are happy to share the results from the class of 2024 Future Plans Report. And Director of School Counseling, Angie Flynn, will help me, assist me in our tonight's presentation.
All right, so the class of 2024 was a very successful year for all of our graduates. We do this, we implemented back in 2023, a senior exit interview. So every counselor meets with their caseload of seniors individually. So we do get a really accurate indicator of what their post-secondary plan is through that interview and then also the graduation survey. So 419 students graduated from the class of 2024. That does not include our students who got certificate of A.T. and M.I.S. Of those 419 students, 83% attended a four-year college, 8% attended a two-year college, and 9% either entered the employment field, military, gap year, or like something like that, related to that. I will note that that 9% is an increase from the class of 2023. That was 5% for the class of 2023 and now it's now 9%. So I just wanted to note that's a pretty significant difference. So of the 419 students graduating in the class, a total of 380 of them continued their education at two- and four-year colleges and universities and technical schools. Nine, of the 380, 91% attended four-year colleges and 9% attended two-year colleges. And again, of the 380, 51% attended public colleges and 49% attended private colleges and universities. So pretty similar there. And these are the graphs that show the different, the public schools and the private schools and then the four-year, two-year, public and private. And then, is this yours?
This is me.
Oh.
That's okay. So every year, we take a look at demographics and look at how these break down by subgroups. And every year, we look at males and females and particularly by gender. So the class of 2024 had 206 males and 213 females. If you look across the pie charts below, 77% of the males attended a four-year college, 87% of females attended a four-year college. The employment side on the males at 14%, the employment or other plans for the females at 5%. And the two-year college or career education or postgraduate schools, 9% for males and 8% for females, so relatively similar. Additionally, we take a look at those who are in our special education program and receive services through their high school career and looked at what their future plans are. And as you'll see by the pie graph, 46% of students who are in IAPs in a class of 2024 actually tend, are enrolled in a four-year college, 36% a two-year college and 18% had other plans, either employment or something else. We also looked at students who were eligible for free and reduced lunch, taking a look at trends here. Again, 56% according, as you look at the pie graph, attended a four-year college where 21% attended two-year college and 23% were employment or had other plans. And also looking at our multi-language learners or ELL students, where we had 60%, that's a pretty significant chunk, had other plans, employment or something else, 30% attended two-year college and 10% attended four-year colleges. Every year, we look at our discipline statistics as races relates to students' race and ethnicity. We do the same review when it comes to our Future Plans Report. Before you is a chart of the categories that are broken down by the D E S E and the number of students in each category and where they attended or their future plans was a two-year public, a two-year private, a four-year public, a four-year pri, or a four-year private. If you see across the board, the, the areas such as native, native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander, we have less than 10 students in that, that category. So what we end up doing was we don't report out the numbers across the board. And the same thing was Native American or Alaskan Native. So again, across the board, we look at, generally trying to look for trends and patterns and addressing trends and patterns as they come to subgroup. Are there things that we have to take into account, whether it's through our curriculum, our instruction, our course selection process, which you know in our school improvement plan last year, we addressed some of the issues of trying to push people towards or support people who want to take advanced work. So those are definitely trends that we look at and this happens, we do the same thing when it comes to students' future plans as well. And I believe, this is mine, right? So the college application process, this year, our school counseling department processed over 3, 3,400 applications to 309 different colleges and universities. And then we take a look at, also look at, see what the highest number of applications is. We had a student that applied to 31 colleges, different colleges and universities. The average applications, which if parents are listening, is probably right around the right numbers, about seven. And 68 students had 15 applications or more. So this is kind of extent, this has expanded a bit since, my opinion, since Common App has gone online. It's become very easy to, to get your whole package together and maybe do, upload some supplemental essays for certain universities. So we have seen a bump in that. If you look at the chart at 2018, we're at 2,128 applications. And with, within, up to currently, we're up 3,400 applications. The most significant was 2020. That was the largest class in the school's history, though, if you remember that, that was about 519 or 520 students. So that makes sense to me as the classes have been a little bit smaller, so, since then. But we had 256 students accepted to this college and 123 enrolled where, 123 different colleges this year, which is pretty much online where we were last year and the previous year. Again, the chart of just the number of, just to give you an idea of like, number of applied, accepted and then enrolled over the course of the last five years, to the left-hand side of that graph is the most recent. We don't see any necessarily trends here around this, but it's certainly visual that we like to take a look at. And then Ms. Flynn.
Yes, so we like to show this every year, just to show districts that have enrollment somewhat like ours or, you know, Westboro and Algonquin are districts that are neighboring, what their enrollment is. This is current enrollment I got from the websites this year and then what their counselor and director caseloads are. Shrewsbury is a little bit high, you know, given the fact that we, post-secondary planning is just a small part of our role. We do vastly many other things, so we just kind of want to show our caseload averages to 32. And we have eight counselors and myself. And then the geographic breakdown, so students were accepted to 256 different colleges in 34 different states and Canada, and they enrolled in 123 different colleges, 20, in 27 different states. The vast majority, as you can see, is New England. And that's the blue part of the pie chart, I think. And was that 80%?
80%.
80%.
That aligns with what national standards are, around 80% stay within geographic region of where they live. So yeah, I think overall, we've seen a little bit of a trend, I think, there's a little bit of love with the Midwest. We have more, I feel like more students, I think we had each student attend Purdue University, which is a little bit different. We've had some at Indiana, we've had some at Wisconsin, we've had some at Marquette. So this class was pretty much, there's a lot of people going to a lot of different places, but certainly we worked to find and Mrs. Flynn and her staff actually, I think, do a remarkable job of trying to tell students and parents, like, we have to find the best fit around what's going to work for them. So not the most prestigious per se college, but certainly one that where students feel like they step on campus and feel like it's going to be a good match for their own interests and activities. I will say, I want to thank Mrs. Flynn and her staff for the, really a ton of work around supporting Class of 2024. And one thing that she glazed over a little bit was, we actually have exit interviews with every student and that started in 2023. Previously, we administered a survey prior to graduation to get the data. We felt we want to get a face-to-face final, let's tell, tell us what you're doing. Don't click on the, the form that we send you and tell us, like, we want to have a conversation about what that could be. And then with the hope of catching some kids who might be on the brink of doing something or taking a gap year or considering a two-year school or a tech school or providing them some information with potential career lead or workforce lead as a result of those meetings. So the counselors did outstanding job, meeting with everyone in the class of 2024, which I applaud their efforts. They do a great job of writing, every one of these counselors has to write a counselor letter for a college application that spends a lot of time doing that. They have to get to know students really well. I think our counselors do an excellent, excellent job at that. So I just want to applaud her leadership in the school counseling department for their hard work around supporting the students in the class of 2024 and this year as well, because they're, they're really into that work right now. So without further ado, we'll answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you so much for the work, colleagues. Ms. Boucher.
I'd like to thank you for the report. As a parent of a member of the class of 2024, I'd like to thank your department for all of your hard work. You did an excellent job, you know, just seeing it from a parent's perspective and going through that last year. We had a lot of recommendations needed for various scholarships and, you know, it's not just the, the applications. That's a big part of it, but there's a lot of other things that get done and dealt with senior year to try to get them over the finish line. So I just wanted to, you know, take a moment to thank you for all the hard work of your, your team.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's always really interesting to see where the students go, where they matriculate year to year, where do the popular schools? And it changes over time and, but they are all doing very well. My question, though, is around that, that increase of the 9% in colleges and for everyone. And I think, you know, when I, what resonated to me, 10 are going to vocational schools. And I didn't have time to look back if that was the number we had reported in the report last year, if there was a number who went to vocational schools, because I know we're going to be talking about a potential partnership with a technical program. And to me, it's that, you know, they're starting after they've graduated from high school because they don't have the opportunity to do it now with the issues around getting students into technical schools. So is that a number that you can talk about or?
We do have the number. I don't remember it offhand. It's definitely less than, 2023, class of 2023 is less than class of 2024, going to technical schools. I just don't know the exact number. It's interesting because I did a little bit of research and there's an increase in enrollment overall, like 2% of students going to college, four-year colleges. But there's a much greater increase, and they didn't say the number, of students attending two-year colleges and technical schools. So that's not just Shrewsbury, but like a national, a trend.
Yeah, yeah, which is good because I think, you know, we're hearing that there aren't enough trade people anymore for a lot of these trades. So at least there's opportunities for students who do want that. But I do feel it's there, they're already behind because they've already, I mean, granted, they've graduated from high school, but they, they have missed out on that opportunity that we're not able to really provide right now. So thank you.
Thank you for this report. Actually, that was one of my questions that I had because I, I pulled up last year's. So the trade school was three last year. We had 10 this year. Fortuitous that we're having a conversation later about vocational and trade schools. But my question is, so with the application process, so when we say that you're sitting down and you're processing all those applications, it's a huge number, but for you, what does that mean for families at home that have students that are applying to 30 colleges at a time? What does that do for your workload? Because it's not just college that you're focused on, you've got ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade. What does that, what does that look like for you guys?
Right, so we have, well, you know, we meet with students, particular this time of year. It's a very heavy September and October for the post-secondary planning. But at the same time, we're meeting with freshmen. We have a freshman curriculum, we go into classrooms. We have a freshman meet and greet where every counselor meets individually with freshman students to initially get to know them. We meet, we have a 10th grade curriculum that happens in November. You know, so we have our school counseling curriculum that encompasses all of our grades. We also have other programs we do such as Science of Suicide, Esper training. Not to mention, we're looking at students' academic grades, implementing interventions, not only academically, but socially, emotionally. We're working with our SWT teams, we're holding, you know, parent-teacher conferences. So there's just like sort of a vast variety. You know, you get the student that come in that's crying and in crisis, so we have to meet with them. So it's kind of like juggling and triage and then also fitting in the meeting with the seniors. And each counselor probably has about 55 seniors on their caseload.
Yeah, I, like my colleagues, appreciate all the effort to help us understand, but to spin off of something we haven't spent as much time on. Certainly, our EL, our EL population is growing in the, in the community, right? And I want to be careful because when we compare pie charts to pie charts, there are only 10 in the graduating classes compared to some of the other buckets which are significantly larger. Certainly, 60% is a high number for young people to be looking at, you know, employment, military, gap year, et cetera. But I think that's going to be an important one for us to pay attention to long-term, right? What does that trend look like, obviously as a community? That's a, that's a demographic shift that we're kind of going through right, right now. And, and so it's certainly something that I took note of and thought, hmm. And I think it's also sort of true as we continue to pay attention to our, our young people who are receiving special education services. It was interesting to think, I have in my head, and I could be wrong, Dr. Sawyer, that around 16% of our student population is on a special ed plan, but when you get to the seniors who are graduating, that's down to about 8%. So like I recognize, we're sort of titrating and trying to find the mother supports that look a little different as they're moving into the, into the world. And yet, obviously, important that we make sure they land well as they, as they move on. And so I would expect those, those numbers to be different, but an important area for us as we think about different populations of students who are a little more vulnerable and maybe need a little more support as they're, as they're moving on. So thank you for continuing to break that out and for us to kind of make sure we pay attention and not just see it as a, as a pie chart, but there's a lot of, a lot of young people and their families who are trying to figure out what to do next and, and some of the more traditional options that are, we're just thinking about. 90 colleges are coming and if you're a young person who's not thinking about that or that's not the path that makes sense for you, you know, we have, we have to make sure we have some other options available. So I recognize and appreciate, I can't conceive of you actually managed to talk to every single senior and get an, get an exit report that, that in itself, just with like absenteeism and other such things is impressive. So thank you for putting out the attention to make sure we have some accurate data that we can, we can keep following these demographics and make sure we're providing for all the kids. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for the report. Also, as a parent of a class of 2024 and as a parent that's actually received the support of the, the school counselors over the last eight years, just know how, how much work your, your team puts into that. And from my perspective, it starts when they enter as freshmen, right? It just, the guidance is there for all four years to find out what the right fit is. And it's not always four-year or two-year college. It could be, you know, employment or something else. But definitely appreciate all the work that goes into preparing students to achieve this level of success. So thank you so much, Dr. Sawyer.
I want to thank Ms. Buzidlo and Ms. Flynn for the report and commend Ms. Flynn and her department, the school counselors who, for those watching at home, that's the terminology that's been used for some number of years, but many watching at home would, would have known these professionals as guidance counselors. And they wear a lot of hats, as you mentioned, and they're really important figures in the quality of what we provide at Shrewsbury High School. You know, in terms of the last year's graduating senior class, again, kudos for all the support you provided. And when you look at, you know, the report, the school committee has in their, in their packet, lists all the different colleges and universities that were, for those students, the vast majority of our students go on to two- and four-year schools. I, I think the fact that it is a real range of lots of different kinds of schools is a, is a credit to what Ms. Buzidlo mentioned earlier about trying to find good fit. We know we want students to have an experience in post-secondary education that's, that's a good experience for them, that fits what their interests are, their academic pursuits and that. But also, given the, the range of schools, it's very clear that if students are setting their sights on schools that are more difficult to get into, there are certainly many students who are succeeding at doing that, which means those schools look at our academic program, that it's, it's a high-performing one that has prepared those students well. I also am curious to see, we're about 50/50 with private-public. Obviously, with the cost of college and university, I know that there's information that financial aid night, there's nuts and bolts night, there's a whole variety of things, parent education pieces, the breakfast that you do for other school counseling topics. I mean, making sure that high school parents are, have some insight. And that's especially important when it's their first student going through the high school, for sure. You know, I'm a number three, we're going through this process right now, I'm a senior. And there's, there's a lot to it and there's a lot, and the kind of support that the counselors can provide is really critical. So, you know, appreciate, appreciate you pointing out the, the ratios that we have. And that's something that I know Mr. Buzidlo advocated for in the last budget cycle. That did not end up being something that was recommended for funding, but, you know, well, obviously, we're going to be starting a new cycle soon and that's something I would imagine that will be in the mix in terms of a potential investment at the high school level. Because we know that our, our numbers aren't changing substantially, right? We know that our population at the high school is going to remain pretty steady over the next several years. And so making sure that we have the capacity to provide the kind of support we want to the students is, is really important as well. So, but again, kudos on, on the work that was done and the points the school committee members made, I think, and that you highlighted, just looking at things differently, at, at different demographics and what that looks like year to year, with the caution about sample sizes, of course, but that is obviously important for us to keep looking at that as we want to do the best we can to set up our kids for success beyond Shrewsbury High School. So thank you very much and much appreciated.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is also a time-scheduled appointment. It is potential vocational technical program partnership with Lester High School. Will be a presentation and discussion tonight. The Lester Public Schools has approached our district with a proposal that would provide access to Shrewsbury resident students to the Chapter 74 Vocational Technical Education Programs at Lester High School. We are pleased to welcome people who are no strangers to school committee meetings, for sure. And there's, there's detailed information in our packet as well as a memorandum from Dr. Sawyer, slide deck that's created by Lester Public Schools and a proposed memorandum of agreement between the districts should the school committee view this as potential partnership as favorable. Should the school committee view this as potential partnership as favorable, the committee could vote at its November 6 meeting to make Lester High School the preferred vocational technical high school for Shrewsbury students and to authorize the memorandum of agreement. So with that, maybe I'll hand it off to Mr. Girardi to do some introductions.
Thank you. Just working to get the slideshow up here. Thank you. So Dr. Sawyer, myself, Mrs. Lazat, Mrs. Ayers, we've had the opportunity to connect with Lester to explore their Chapter 74 vocational program and to consider if there might be a, a relationship that could allow Shrewsbury students to, to, you know, attend their program and to explore their program that they have. So I'll turn it over to Superintendent Castigian to introduce his team and to work through this presentation.
So thank you so much. Brett Castigian, Superintendent at Lester Public Schools. I have Nick Packard here to my right, a school committee member at Lester. And then we have Principal Zawada, who is not only the principal at Lester High School, but a Shrewsbury resident. So I think we'll go to the next slide. First thing I wanted to do is, is thank Dr. Sawyer. I've known Dr. Sawyer in a professional capacity for 15-plus years. He started his superintendency about the same time that I started mine. Prior to coming to Lester, I was in the Quabog Regional School District for 13 years. So I've known Dr. Sawyer for, for quite some time. The opportunity to partner with such a well-respected educator in such a fine system as yours is just awesome for us. And I believe it is a win-win, and I'm going to go on and explain exactly why. But you've got an outstanding superintendent. You know, between the two of us, I think there's 30 years plus of superintendent knowledge in this room. And, you know, some districts change superintendents like they change light bulbs, so that's rare. So the opportunity to partner with somebody that has such knowledge is, is just, it's wonderful for me and I think it's going to be a good thing for the lesser community as well as the Shrewsbury community. The Shrewsbury administrative team has been awesome and Pat Collins, who's behind us, he's, we hit the lottery when we got him as our consultant. He's got the knowledge of vocation, of, you know, finance knowledge. He's, he's the entire package. So the stars have really aligned for this. And somebody once told me, prepare, when, success is when preparation meets opportunity. And I think what you have here is you've got an awful lot of prepared people with an opportunity, and I think it could be quite special. Thank you. Next slide. So we're going to talk about the unique opportunity next. Our current Chapter 74 programs, our expansion plans, the space available this year as well as in next few years, the MOU, and then what we would do for the planning timeline of this year, and then answer any questions that you have. So for the people at home, and I'm sure everybody knows this here, Lester and Shrewsbury are in the exact same boat. And what I mean by that is that Lester used to send students to Asabet Valley, just like Shrewsbury used to send students to Asabet Valley. And as we all know, Asabet Valley is full, they're no longer accepting students from non-member communities. So that is what we're dealing with. Why it makes sense for both of us is you'll see in the next couple of slides that our population is going down. When I saw your presentation right there, you have 419 students in the senior class. That's bigger than our high school.
It is.
So, so the scale is different, and this is where I think it could really be a win-win. Next slide. So the unique opportunity in, on September 22, 2021, the former Becker College went under and it provided the town of Lester with a unique opportunity to purchase that campus. And what they did is they purchased 19 buildings on 44 acres for just under $18 million. It's the deal of a lifetime. So it is really a game changer for Lester and it's a game changer for me because, you know, this is my third year in Lester. Shortly thereafter, once this happened, Lester is my hometown, it's near and dear to me. They recruited me to come there. I had some experience with Chapter 74 programs and it's just, it's a really good opportunity for, for the community. Next slide. So this is a map of the former Becker College. I can tell you it's no small task and keeps us up at night.
Keeps us, keeps us going.
So our task is to basically take a college campus and turn it into a high school. So it's, has its pros and its cons. It's an open campus. We have several buildings. There's a lot of walking and it's my understanding that you're coming to take a tour tomorrow. I would say, wear sneakers because there's going to be a lot of walking. But it also gives the kids an opportunity to walk in between classes. And I would argue that that is good for kids and it's good for staff. They get a little break in between. So what we're working with is four different buildings currently, right now, that are also on the MSBA's list, which I think is the next slide. So along, shortly thereafter, once we purchased the former Becker College, we applied to the Massachusetts School Building Authority through a statement of interest and we were accepted. We recently completed the eligibility phase and now we are going to a special town meeting on November 19th for feasibility. The feasibility will be for four buildings. The first one is the Fuller Campus Center, and I put the date of the buildings when they were built. That was built in 2012. It needs nothing. I mean, the building is the showpiece of the college, the former college campus. It's in really good shape. However, the, the buildings next to it do need a little work. Borger was built in 1969, Swan in 1962, and the Lenfest Animal Clinic in 1970. And at your tour tomorrow, what we will do is we will take you through each one of these buildings. But our programs are in conjunction with the MSBA. So in writing the statement of interest for the MSBA, what we had to do is we had to reject our Chapter 74 programs of what we're planning for the future. And I think that is why we were, one of the reasons why we were welcomed into the MSBA so quickly. Next slide. The first program that we started with, to me, was a no-brainer. So where do you start? Lester historically has never had any Chapter 74 programs. So I can tell you before we started, what we did is we surveyed students, we, we went to the community, we, we have data. I went to PTO meetings at the elementary school, and I can tell you in Lester, at the PTO meetings, at a very young age, in our town, they're saying that they want these opportunities for their children when they get to high school. And I was under pressure to come up with some opportunities. So one of, one of the things that we did is we looked at all of them and said, okay, is there one that fits where, you know, it's a little bit of everything? So we came up with building and property maintenance. It's a little bit of carpentry, it's a little bit of electrical, it's a little bit of plumbing, a little bit of HVAC, a little bit of landscaping. It's a perfect, in my opinion, a perfect trade to start with that kind of encompasses, you know, all of, all of the different trades. So this has been our first program. If you could go to the next slide. These are our kids working. The picture on the left is our students building a garden for the senior center. And on the right is our shop. And this is where we fully renovated this shop so that the students will have this opportunity. Now, for our future plans, electrical is going to encompass one of our trades that we're looking at for the future. Electrical is part of building property and maintenance, so it just makes sense. It's a smooth transition. And I can tell you that yesterday I was at Upper Cape Technology School down at Cape Cod. And what, what I was there for is STEM Week, but Lester received a grant for $1 million to upgrade our building and property maintenance. So that's strategic in that we're not only going to focus on BPM, but we're also going to focus on the future, and the future being electrical, plumbing, HVAC. For next year, what we're focusing on is electrical. And I'll, I'll talk more about the Part A, Part B, and, and the requirements going forward. Next slide. Success begets success, and we did have a, a little bit of success. It's very popular with our students. We had Channel 5 out in January. This is one of our students being interviewed. And it's, it's a win-win for our community. We've got a, a nice Home Depot apron hanging in our shop. We'll show you tomorrow. All the kids autographed it. You can see some of those helmets that they're wearing. Those were donated by a local company, Olaf Construction. So the community is really behind us and, and things are, are going really well. And I just wanted to share that. Next slide. With each trade, you have a pack, a program advisory council. I just want to share that these are the people that are helping guide our curriculum. My expertise is in education, not so much in the trades. So what we're doing is we're going to the people in the fields and asking them and making sure that what we're doing and the product that our, our, our students are, are taking the curriculum, that they're marketable after college. So, you know, we have a real focus on making sure that our kids are employable. And as you mentioned, the, the trades, they're, they're tough to find. You know, try to find an electrician, plumber, et cetera. It's, it's a tall order. The baby boomers are, are retiring and, and there is a real need. So we're not building things, you know, just by plucking them out of the air. It's very strategic. There's a lot of data behind every single one of the decisions that we're making. Next slide. The second one was probably the easiest one for us, early education and care. Education, again, my forte. I've had the opportunity to build this in my previous district and this was not a, a heavy lift for us. But the students would, would graduate with their CDA and the other credentials that you see up there. In this picture, it's important to note, that's our state representative, Dave LeBeuf. Next to me, there's one of our high school students working with our student, with, with our youngest students. And we do have the legislative support, and you'll see that in, in other slides there. But the legislators are behind us. This is our PAC for EEC. You can see that we're partnered with Worcester State, various daycares. We have students on all of our PACs, former teachers and community members. It's really cool when you get the call from the people at the senior center and they say, hey, you know, how can we participate? And this is a way for them to, to participate and they've been some of our biggest fans. Health assisting is our third program. So those two are on the books. BPM and EEC approved last year, so we've run them for a year. Last year, we also went through the process, and I'll describe the process if I haven't already. It's, it's rigorous. It is very rigorous and it's a Part A, a Part B, and then the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education comes out and they do a, a site visit. So we are on the tail end of that process for health assisting right now. Part A, all set. Part B, good. The Department of Education was onsite last week.
Last week.
And, you know, we're, we're waiting for that official word for health assisting and culinary. Health assisting nursing is near and dear to me. Prior to starting our program, we started small the year before with a CNA program. So it's really our second year running the program, but next year, this year will be our first year being state-approved. The picture here, this is a really cool curriculum that the, the students did that's on the football field, on, on the 50-yard line. What they did is they did a simulation where they said, you know, somebody went to cardiac arrest. And they, you know, timed calling up to the high school, which is, you know, a short walk, two-minute walk, and how long did it take to, to get the EMTs down there? And, you know, they had to do the chest compressions all the way. It was really, really powerful learning experience. So we're, we're very much a supportive, hands-on learning. The next program, our fourth, oh, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. There's Congressman McGovern, Senator Durant, Representative Frost, and Representative LeBeuf. Had almost all of them. We're just missing State Representative Berthium on there. But they've all been out, they've seen our programs. When McGovern came out, we were just starting. You can see that the, the walls were green. When you see them tomorrow, they're all painted, freshly painted. I almost didn't put that slide on there. The beds are covered. That bed is something that Mrs. Zawada and I went to Bay State Mary Lane Hospital that closed and wear. We loaded up a box truck and they basically...
Personally.
They said, take everything. So, you know, we are being very economical with our budget and what we're finding is there's all sorts of opportunities like this to get these materials, if not free, at a very low cost. So that's the legislative support. Here's our health assisting advisory council, again, Worcester State, UMass. The nursing association always involve the unions in, in the, in the PACs. That's one of the requirements. And then you can see some of the others that are on the PAC. The last program that we are running right now is our culinary arts. This is probably our most popular. When you go into the culinary arts program, you smell cookies and brownies and, you know, kids have smiles on their face when they're coming to these programs. So it, it's, it's very popular. What we did is we redid our, our, one of our classrooms. It's all brand-new equipment. We did, prior to receiving the lab modernization grant that I just explained for $1 million, last year we had the capital skills grant for 300...
63.
363,000. And that allowed us to purchase all new equipment. So when you come tomorrow, you will see all new equipment in these, in these classrooms. These are some pictures. This was, you know, just last week, week before. Our students making cookies and brownies, going down and, and serving our seniors. Again, the community partnerships that are developing are just, are really, really starting to flourish. There's our culinary arts advisory council. We have various restaurants, people that are involved in the food community, the union involved in there, and community members and students. So again, it's not Mrs. Zawada and myself coming up with the curriculum. It's looking at the industry professionals and making sure that what we're doing is going to make our students marketable once they graduate high school. This slide, we can go over very quickly, but these are the credentials earned. I know that is a, a big thing and it's a big selling point. When I go to the, the, the meetings with the parents, this is what they want and we're delivering exactly, not only what the parents want, but what the state is requiring. Future expansion plans with the Massachusetts School Building Authority Statement of Interest, as I mentioned, electrical. What we are in the process of right now is Part A. Part A is due mid to late November. Once Part A is complete, we will go to Part B. Part B is typically due, you know, around March, shortly after the start of the new calendar year. And then the biggest hurdle that we've come across is the site inspections. That's when they come out and they, they put us through the wringer. It is very rigorous. They're looking, I mean, they, they were feeling the brail to make sure that, you know, we were accommodating everyone and, and that it was equitable across the board, that our, our pipes are covered, that, you know, everything from the parking lot to the classroom is accessible for everyone. And, you know, this is, this is what we're working on right now. As I mentioned, the grant for the physical plant for BPM allows us to... As I mentioned, the grant for the physical plant for BPM allows us to use or purchase more materials for electrical. And when you see the shop tomorrow, the electrical shop is adjacent to the BPM shop, and we're using that grant to fund that program. Plumbing would be the following year. Again, you know, we have the town meeting coming up November 19th, but there is strong support from the community. This is a blue-collar community. They want these programs, and it's really starting to, you know, have a groundswell of support. Something happened with the... And the last one on that slide was veterinary. And veterinary, this building is amazing. It's 10,000 square feet. It's the former Becker College's veterinary clinic. It's awesome. The problem is that we've been looking for partners, and we passed part A. We're on to part B, but we, we are still looking to find that right partner. And one of the things that we've been doing is going out to other vocational technical schools and seeing how they've done it. So, Monty Tech, Worcester Tech, Bay Path. And what we've noticed is that they all have different models, and what we're trying to do, especially for veterinary, what we're trying to do is figure out exactly how the model is going to best fit Leicester. That building, as I mentioned, was built in the 70s. It also needs a little bit of work, but it's in great shape. When you see it tomorrow, when I say a little bit of work, the floor needs to be redone, but, you know, other than that, you're not talking a full renovation. So, one of the things, I'm not sure if we went over the slide yet, but the MSBA, with the project, we're looking at it more like an accelerated repair-type program, not a building from the ground up. So, my vision is that with those four buildings, that we do it in phases, and we do it quickly, and we do it hopefully over the summer. If you're familiar with the accelerated repair, I mean, those, you bang those out rather quickly. And I think, you know, rather than having one monstrosity of a project, you know, we're looking at phases over time. So, this slide is not my favorite slide. This is Leicester's population, student population, and as you can see, there's the trend. And the shaded part of that graph is that's MSBA's projection. So, what we're trying to do is we're trying to reverse that trend. That's why we're looking for a partner. That's why partnering with Shrewsbury is so appealing to Leicester. Again, you've got many more students than we do, and I think it could be a perfect partnership for both. Space available for this year, so how do we get off the ground? What do we start with? What we've talked about is having 15 students, potentially, a maximum of 15 for the second half of this year. And we talked about early to mid-January to do kind of like a pilot program for the second half of this year. And that pilot program would be the grade-nine exploratory. So, what our students would do is they would have a little bit of each one of those programs and try to decide, you know, which is the best program for them. And I'm of the mindset that, you know, if you decide for it or against it, it's a win. I think one of the worst things can happen, and we've seen this, and I've witnessed it personally, is a student will graduate high school, say they want to go into nursing or be a doctor, yet they go into the emergency room or wherever, and they're grossed out by the sight of blood, you know? So, every experience, whether it's positive or negative, I think is a positive experience because it helps them decide what they want to do for their career. Projected space, please. I'm doing a lot of talking, so please...
I noticed. It's fine. It's fine. I'm welcome to just sit here and listen. So, we do have projected space for students at Leicester High School. I've been meeting with the counseling department over the last couple of weeks. What we wanted to determine just exactly is, would we be able to fill out their schedules? Would they have the opportunity? We took the liberty of looking over your program studies. I'm familiar with it. I have a daughter at Shrewsbury High School right now, so I kind of understand it, and wanted to make sure that students would be able to matriculate if they came in in the ninth grade and take the courses that they were taking at Shrewsbury High School, which is possible. We also have the room. So, our class sizes are not Shrewsbury's class sizes. Shrewsbury does a great job, and they keep their class sizes manageable. Ours are in the mid-to-high teens for most of our courses. So, adding Shrewsbury students into our course load is not going to maximize our classes to any great degree. So, we did, actually, what we did is we mirrored a schedule for every one of the 15 students and determined whether or not, what their schedule would be, what classes would be available to them, and what the course load would be for that educator. And we determined that it wouldn't break anybody's course load over. We have a recommendation of 28. I'm not sure what the contract in Shrewsbury has, but we wouldn't even come close to that. We would be more in the low to mid-20s, if not high teens. Just moving on then to projected enrollment. So, we are prepared to at least allow for 20 to 25 seats per year for each grade level. And we have the space to do that, both in the exploratory, and we have the space to do that in each one of the programs, to ensure that seats will be available for both Leicester High School students and the Shrewsbury students. There's one question that gets asked often. DESI presents it as an on-ramp, off-ramp, the opportunity of a student to change their mind. Every student reserves the right to change their mind. And the way we design our programs, we ensure that a student can on or off-ramp and still finish a program in their sophomore year. So, they can get through the exploratory, they can commit to any one of our five, four programs in the future, next year, five, and decide, this is great, and then not have finished it out, but still start a different program and be able to finish that program out by the end of their four years. Each one of the curriculum is a three-year curriculum. We also do a little something different at Leicester High School. We have a very robust internship/externship program. So, at least 50% of our senior students attend an internship or externship, and we're built on a block A/B. And what that means is that every other day, our seniors are either going to their internship/externship, and then they're taking their academics on the other day. A lot of trade schools, a lot of vocational schools will do an on-week or an off-week. We don't think that's really, our model, we think, is a little bit more successful in the sense that students are getting academics throughout the entire year, and they're getting academics every other day, regardless of their trade, regardless of the program. I know that Shrewsbury has a couple of IP programs. We have a couple ourselves, and those come with internships/externships also. So, Chapter 74 and IPs, those students will be mandated an externship, and then we have students that, they're not, they're not part of any one of our programs, but they still go and do an externship in their senior year, to try and get a nibble of just what's a possible idea for their future, where they want to go, and what they want to do.
Same information, just on a graph rather than the data. So, the proposed MOU, it's in your packet. The Department of Education, as you know, allows school committees to select a preferred technical school. Our school committee did vote this last week, and, you know, we would love to partner with The timeline that we're looking at going forward, we welcome you tomorrow. Again, bring your sneakers. And the November 6th, that would be the timeline for Shrewsbury to vote. We are planning an information night at Leicester High School for interested students, and we were talking about this too. I think we'd like to do two nights, one in Shrewsbury and one at Leicester. You know, everybody's busy. We're all, I'm a parent. I get it. I've got three kids. We're going in a million different directions, and, you know, one, one date just probably isn't enough, and it'd be nice for them, an opportunity to see, see it as well as, you know, hear about it here. There would be a lottery on the 16th, if there's more applicants than 15. And then, in January, they would start, January 21st, I think is the date. So, some of the questions, and thank you, Mr. Collins, for helping us with that. The big question is, you know, the financial behind it. So, the way that the tuition rate is set for Chapter 74 schools is it's set by the Department of Education. I can tell you, I've had several conversations with them, and we're, Leicester's kind of rewriting the playbook. And what I mean by that is we're adding programs at a pretty quick pace. So, there, the financials are a moving target. So, one of the things that we suggested is using Tantaskwa's neighboring school districts right down the street from Leicester, using their rate, which was 13, 813, for the half year, it would be just under 7,006, 907. How would Shrewsbury students get to Leicester? Sending counts are responsible. I know that there is a grant available this year. I believe that Shrewsbury applied. I would be shocked if you don't get it, because this is not only good for Shrewsbury and good for Leicester, but the DESI's pushing this. And when they did a grant last year, and we applied, and we hired Pat, they left money on the table. So, there is money for it, there is initiatives for it, and, you know, I wish you luck with that grant.
I could tackle this one.
Please.
Um, no. So, they'd be part of our regular education programming, along with our vocational technical programming. There are a lot more similarities than people may think between the two communities. We do offer advanced coursework. We do offer AP coursework. We do dual enrollment with Worcester State right now. We currently have 41 seniors taking dual enrollment courses and earning college credit. They do that in both the fall and the spring. It's something else that we do. Many of our seniors don't actually attend English at Leicester High School. They attended at Worcester State University, and then they are able to forego that. We're also starting with math this spring, and so we'll have two English and one math. And then, we're looking to partner with Worcester State University for next year for our health assisting program. And what typically happens is that if Worcester State chooses to part with, partner with us, we have a very good relationship with them, they would receive credit for NU 100, which is the first nursing program or the first nursing class at Worcester State. We have the full battery of courses. We looked particularly, I know that Shrewsbury has some students start in biology and some students start in physics or STE, and we have a plan for that. That's the one blip that we saw, and we wanted to make sure that we could accommodate those student schedules and still allow them to get into a program, to take the program and have the room to do it. So, that was the one thing that we worked on over the last couple of weeks to make sure that that wasn't going to be an issue, and it's not. Yes? So, we have 17 varsity programs. We do have a boys' hockey team. They play for Worcester. They don't play for Shrewsbury. I'm familiar with your boys' hockey team. I've gone to a lot of their games. They're really good. And we are most proud, I guess, of our esports team. We, I'll say it quietly, but it was a very proud moment for me. We beat Shrewsbury last year in esports. It was really cool. That's one of our, that program has grown beyond belief. You'll see it tomorrow. We were able to write a grant and receive grant funds to completely fill out our esports program. So, we have 17 stations. It's kind of bananas, but it's an amazing activity, and our students actually do that. There's more practices and contests with esports than any other sport that we have, I think, and they're always practicing, probably because it's video games. But we have all of those programs available. We have a full slate of co-curricular programs and activities, and obviously, every, we welcome all Shrewsbury students into those programs. Do students apply for and get accepted into a specific Chapter 74? Like all vocational schools, in grade nine, it's an exploratory program. So, they'll go for probably a half of year, and they'll travel through all of our exploratory for all of our trades, and then they will apply, and we'll do a top three. And then, students would either get a seat or not get a seat in their first choice, get a seat and not, or not get a seat in their second choice. And just like any other vocational school, if a student, if a student doesn't get into a trade that they wish to be in, regardless if it's at Asabat or Tantaskwa, then they reserve the right to obviously either go private or go back to their public school of choice, which would be Shrewsbury. But we do have enough seats to allow Shrewsbury students to take all of the trades. We're not bursting at the seams right now in our trades, and with the addition of electrical in the fall of '25, we'll have enough seats available to make sure that everybody can be in a trade that kind of fits their needs. Our students, we have about a 60 to 70% four-year college bound. That was my last time we looked at it, which means that about a third to a fourth of our students, wrong math, 30 to 40% of our students are going into the trades, which means we have seats available.
So, this one's pretty much self-explanatory. If they change their mind, they, they come back to Shrewsbury or enroll in a private school, similar to what would happen with Asabat? Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. Colleagues, questions, comments? Ms. Effernan?
Yeah. I am unfortunately the one school commitment member who can't join you tomorrow due to a professional commitment, so bear with me if I have a few more questions, because I know my colleagues are going to get time with you all during, during the tour. Certainly, really exciting opportunity. There are so many ways, you said, we are similar, and that, that our communities are sort of like crying out for more career and vocational education, and yet we are on very opposite end of the spectrum when it comes to space, where you have too much and we don't have enough. And so, really interesting to think about how to, how to partner and pull that together. So, appreciate both the creativity and the efforts on behalf of both of the administrative teams here. Help me understand. You mentioned a couple of different things, and I just am trying to tease out where some of the rules come from. You mentioned part A and part B as part of, I think, means like a DESI Chapter 74 requirements to be approved, but also talked about it as part of the Statement of Interest and MSBA, and sort of, so I'm imagining maybe Chapter 74 has some space constraints, that MSBA is part of the funding challenge to get there, but I couldn't figure out which was which. So, can you just help explain that a little bit?
Apples and oranges.
Yes.
So, MSBA, when, when the MSBA was written, that was written probably two years ago. So, at that time, what I did is projected kind of exactly what you saw, and that helped us get into the eligibility phase. Has nothing to do with the Department of Education.
Okay.
With the DESI...
And that's the part A, part B?
DESI is part A, part B. That's an annual process. It's very rigorous, and it's basically, you know, if you look at it like from a balcony, like the vision is MSBA. The nuts and bolts is the part A, part B. That's the, you know, you have to apply and get accepted, and they do their site visit, and it's very, very rigorous.
Okay.
It might be a little bit akin, if, when we built the new Beal School, we were responsible for providing an educational program that MSBA had to approve, but also DESI had to approve it as well, in order for us to get a successful MSBA project. So, I would look at the, the part A, part B, DESI approving of the Chapter 74 program is making sure that the program meets the requirements that the state sets out, meets the requirements, that it's meeting the needs in the trades in that area, that sector of the economy, and that MSBA is going to expect that you have approved Chapter 74 programming, that they're going to provide money to build space out for, which we know there's a terrible shortage of Chapter 74 space across the state, hence them, you know, probably, you mentioned, may have helped you get into the pipeline, because they're looking to try to fund projects like that. And, you know, similarly, the grant that we've applied for, just in terms of the cost of potentially sending some current ninth graders there for the second semester, they're encouraging districts like ours, communities like ours that are not part of a voc-tech district, to partner together with others to try to get kids into Chapter 74 programs where they're currently not getting access, so.
Got it. Do you mind if I do one or two more apologies? So, and I'm sort of just holding aside for a minute, Dr. Serre, a couple of questions about our kids and costs and some other things, just as respectful of your, of your time here. So, the, help me just understand a tiny bit more. You said all of your seniors are engaged in like an internship, a day on, a day off, which is a, which is a really interesting model. And so, the chapter, the Chapter 74 programming of any of the four that you offer in the future, seven or 12, however you grow, is that then day on, day off as well for all four years? Or is that a particular program for seniors? Help me just understand... Help me just understand, like, so a traditional ninth grader, what does that look like in terms of seventy-four programming?
I do apologize.
No, there's a, there's a lot to explain. And you have also a beautiful campus. Let's start there. That is amazing. I didn't say that, but we, I, wow, what a problem to have. It's a very far field from ours, but please.
So, we run a block A-B schedule. And our students attend four classes per day at ninety-five minutes per day. We did that to limit transitions. So, while students are walking outside, as a principal, I'd like them to walk outside less. I limited it to about three transitions a day, but they do serve as a great break. During the exploratory phase, they'll be taking mostly your typical freshman courses that any student, any grade nine student would take, plus the exploratory, and maybe an elective within a trade that they might be leading towards. We have the freedom within our schedule, because it's an eight-period day, to do that. And then, as they progress, their opportunity to take more trade-related programs can be built into their, whether it be their A-day or B-day. But, it's not necessarily a non-educational course. So, one of the things that's really important, especially during the part B phase, back to the part B, part A, sorry, but the part B phase.
Hopefully, you have an A-B day and we have part A, part B.
Yeah, everything is. So, during the process of chapter seventy-four, you're also looking to build in your regular education programming or your academic programming into your chapter seventy-four programming. So, for instance, our students in our anatomy HA program, which we had originally had been approved under the Department of Public Health, we had to build into that anatomy and physiology, great course at Shrewsbury High School, by the way. My daughter loves it. And then, we have an anatomy and physiology two course. That coincides with HA. So, those are obviously, the NF is one, is a lab science. So, that would be the junior's, junior year lab science for that student, but also fulfilling the requirement of the health assisting hours that they need and the programming that they need. When they become a senior, all trades, all chapter seventy-four and IPs mandate an externship. So, they will do that in the spring of their senior year. We do have opportunities for all seniors to go on externships. We typically run them on one of the two days. We have a lot of flexibility in our scheduling. We have a lot of class size. We don't have, necessarily have the class size limitations that other schools may have. So, what we're able to do is we're able to stack our Englishes and maths, high school principal talk, but we're able to stack our English and math on a specific day, thereby allowing the entire other day for an externship, so that they can get their externship hours.
So helpful. Thank you very much. You may have noticed in some of the prior, the prior report, our EL population has grown pretty dramatically here. And so, can you talk about how, what supports looks like, particularly in the trades? Lot of complicated needs and what that might look like. Certainly, it's important as we're looking at where that population is going, they're going into work. And so, feels like what an important one we love to make sure that we're serving.
Yeah, so, again, to talk about part B. What are the things that we have to work with through part B in our chapter seventy-four programming? So, Leicester High School, we use a co-teaching model. So, our special educators are actually co-teaching courses along with our L educators. So, we co-teach, and that includes the trades. So, if a student is in, to allow access for that student with terminology or access to the curriculum, we have a co-teacher in the trade programs, whether it be HA one or culinary one or whatever, to allow that student the access and the supports that they need, whether it be L or special education. So, we're embedding those in the actual courses.
Great. I'll stop there. And thank you all very much. I'm sure I'll give you all phone calls after your tour tomorrow. But, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I think this is really exciting, as we look at our students not being able to get into the trades. I have a dad who's an electrician, whose father would not let him go to trade school, and he went after the military. And he's like, I should have gone then, because that's what I wanted to do. And I look at our students who aren't able to do it. And I personally think it's really a state issue we need to do better with. So, this is such a welcoming opportunity for our students. One of my questions is around the MSBA. So, we're looking at like the electrical plumbing and the HVAC. So, it looks like you're all set on that electrical piece. And then, the plumbing and HVAC, and then the veterinary piece eventually. And there seems to be a higher cost with trade schools for machines and equipment and things. So, are we looking at a typical MSBA reimbursement level around what the needs will be for those next two pieces?
So, the MSBA reimbursement rate is roughly sixty percent. And one of the buildings that I'm going to show you tomorrow is, it's called the former Swan Library from Becker College. It's a two-story building. The first floor ceilings are, you know, cathedral ceilings. It's just, it's meant for a lab space. And what we envision is having the first floor as the lab space, and then, the bottom floor being all classrooms. So, we've got plenty of space to do it. It's just a matter of, you know, getting that building, and you'll see it tomorrow. Again, you're not talking about a major remodel. You're talking more an accelerated repair that, you know, we've got a few people in the trades that are working with us, one who is on the school committee. And not my niche, but what they've told me is that it's not a heavy lift. You know, you've got a shell of a building that is there. It's just a matter of, you know, making it more energy efficient, number one, and, you know, updating it. One of the, two of the things that have been major obstacles in the older buildings, one is fire suppression, the other one is access, you know, second floor ADA compliance. How they got away with that for as long as they did, I have no idea. But, three of those buildings need that. What we've already started doing, and I didn't mention this in the presentation, but when they bought the former Becker, they took out an additional two million dollars. And that two million dollars has been funding some projects. So, what we've already done in one of our buildings, which is the Borger Academic Building, they've just completed the fire suppression.
Last night.
Yeah, ironically, last night. So, we're moving forward in both ways. And I think it's, the projects are not, again, they're not a heavy lift.
Right. Thank you. And again, thank you for coming to us and giving us this opportunity, because it's something we're hearing from parents, we're hearing at a town meeting. And it's definitely an area that, as a society, we need to do better at. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Boucher?
Thank you very much for the presentation. It's very comprehensive. Just a couple of questions about your current student population. And how far along are the first students that have taken advantage of this opportunity? What grades are they in? And then, kind of, what areas have been most popular? Or like, could you give us like the percentage of the student body that takes advantage of the opportunities? And then, between these four opportunities that you currently offer, how, you know, kind of, what's the percentage of kids in those different programs? Just to kind of get a sense of how popular certain programs are.
My apologies for not having exact percentages.
No, and no, yeah, just kind of get a general sense.
So, we're currently running four of our programs in their first year. We have our ninth graders currently in the exploratory. They're running through that. And then, we're running in PBM, property building maintenance, and early education. We're in year two for those programs. We're running at about forty percent of our population right now, taking advantage of those programs. As I stated, we're about a sixty percent four-year two college, four-year, two-year college bound. So, we look forward, and plus, we have two IP programs. And those IP programs are fifteen to twenty seats themselves. And those students enroll into those IP programs in the eighth grade. So, those students are taken out of our typical high school population, which is about eighty-three students a class. We're at three hundred and eighty-three students right now. So, that forty seats, that's where, it's a hard number. When I think of the senior class at Shrewsbury High School, and I think of Leicester High School, we could fit inside of it. So, our IP students are taken out of the mix for chapter seventy-four in the freshman year, because they've dedicated themselves to the IP programs, whether it be business and finance or advanced manufacturing. So, that's what it's allowing us, the seats, to be able to fit students from another district in our school without me having. I'm not very, I remember speaking with Mr. Collins, and when that first number was presented to me, I was very worried about the first meeting. Shrewsbury is very large. They were interested, or we were interested in partnering. And I was expecting a number that was going to blow my socks off, and it didn't. We think we have the capacity, where we're going to be able to offer those students the program they actually want at Leicester High School, whether it be one of the five trades we'll have for fall twenty-five.
Thank you.
Ms. Rayford?
Thank you for the tremendous work that has gone into this. I think this is a phenomenal and much-needed opportunity. I have one question and one comment. Is this, I know that we're talking about Leicester and Shrewsbury right now, but have you thought of including other districts? Or are there plans down the line to include other districts? Or is this strictly Leicester or Shrewsbury?
I think, you know, at the start, I mentioned the reputation of Dr. Sawyer and the reputation of the Shrewsbury Public Schools. That's who we want to partner with. If it doesn't work, then I think what we would do is we would go in another direction. But, I think, you know, for all the reasons that we mentioned, we, it just, to me, the stars have aligned. It seems like a perfect partnership. I don't see the need to go to other communities. Not that that need isn't there in those other communities. But, you know, it's, I'd rather have one partner than, you know, seven. It's just, it makes it, makes it, you know, just that much more of a community-based. And, you know, again, I think Pat showed up at the right time. Pat's, it's just, it's got Shrewsbury, Leicester written all over it. And, you know, I don't see the need to go to other communities unless it doesn't work. And I feel with the numbers that we wouldn't go to the other communities. I think we've filled the slots, and it's just, it's a good partnership.
I have one more thing. I think that the need is definitely here within the town. And you had made a comment earlier. Thank you for considering adding another informational night in Shrewsbury, because clearly, I want families, I want students to go out and see the campus and to see themselves there. But, it is difficult, and especially with the numbers that we have, that we have a lot of students that are deciding to go into the trades, going into employment, that giving that opportunity a little closer to home, that maybe they can't get there because maybe they are going to a job at night, or whatever it may be. Having that opportunity to say, I'm interested, I definitely want to know, but I just can't make it that night. Thank you for, you know, coming up with that and having it, that there's flexibility to go and see it, which obviously I want them to go see. But, having that opportunity to be here and get their interest and get information and whatnot. So, thank you, thank you for that. I'm looking forward for tomorrow and to seeing the campus.
Any further questions?
Mr. Wensley, can I just leave a couple of things that mostly are, I think, relative to a potential vote on November sixth? And like my colleagues, I'm excited about the opportunity. But, for a little due diligence, Dr. Sawyer, and mostly for Mr. Girardi, obviously, the costs and how we are thinking about that and where that's coming from, sort of ours to bear and think about. I'd also be curious, Mrs. Girardi, if these are the kind, if these programs are the types of programs that we think our students have historically been interested when they're applying to Asabet? I know culinary is popular everywhere, right? Like, you know, are some of those other ones, like the ones that our kids were kind of picking? Is that, are these aligned? I know we've done some, I know Dr. Lozdat has done some work with workforce development here in town, thinking about where our workforce needs are. I'm assuming they're aligned, but it would be nice to know if this, if there's a student choice factor that also, that also, you know, that the choices you've made sort of fit well. And I'm certainly interested in knowing a little bit more about the transportation grant. Who's that from, where that's happening, what kind of costs those will cover? So, those are a couple of things that are kind of in the back of my mind that would be important things to learn about. And maybe that makes sense now.
Yeah, and if it's okay, I can briefly respond to a couple of those things. So, in terms of the proposition that up to fifteen of our current ninth graders would move to become Leicester High School students for the second semester to take part in the exploratory, become part of the chapter seventy-four programming there, depending on, if it's all fifteen seats, we would need two vans to transport those students back and forth. And in terms of the combination of transportation and the tuition for the rest of the year would be about a hundred thousand dollars, give or take, with another thirty to sixty thousand, depending on whether it's one or two vans, depending how many students would actually take part. The grant we've applied for would actually, we've asked for all of those costs to be covered. It's not only transportation, it's also tuition to try to build these partnerships between different districts. We will not know where we'll receive that grant until December or January. So, if we were to vote at your next meeting, that's going to be an open question. So, that's something that we'll have to grapple with in terms of, you know, how that plays out, if you're interested in moving forward. Based on our initial look at where our numbers are, based on our budget for Asabet, tuitions itself this year, the fact that we're actually shifted to using vans for Asabet, because we don't need big yellow buses this year because of the number of students. There's some transportation savings there. And there are other areas that budget, we're pretty confident, even if we get no dollars from the state, that we could make that work, even if a full fifteen students. We don't know what the interest level is. That's a variable, right? We don't know what that's going to look like. And one of our goals after this evening, this being presented, is to reach out directly to the families of students in grade nine who applied to Asabet, to see if they're interested potentially in this, want to make them aware of it. We'll let them know that there's going to be some information sessions if the school committee chooses to move forward. But, we want to get some initial sense of whether what people's interest is that will help us. Not a commitment, obviously, but at least just some initial thinking from those families. So, that those are all pieces that we'll certainly bring in detail to the meeting on November sixth. The question that was asked, I know it was asked by town meeting a few years ago, so I know that Mr. Collins actually reported out. When Shrewsbury students go to Asabet, they're spread across all the different shops, quote-unquote, that we have. They have availability to. This was data back from two thousand and twenty-two, well, it was, yeah, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We had sixty-three students in grades ten, eleven, and twelve. Of course, the ninth graders were doing their exploratory. Once they've chosen a shop, there were sixty-three students. There was no more than seven in one, which was programming and web development, no fewer than those one that had won at Painting Design Technologies. Most had three or four or five students across, I think, here for like sixteen-plus different pieces. Culinary has always been popular, I know, overall at Asabet in terms of as a shop itself, as has, you know, some other areas. I think electrical typically has been popular, plumbing, health assisting, which is something that Leicester offers. I believe with culinary is like the most popular overall at Asabet. You know, in terms of, we had three students in health assisting that particular year, and we happened to have in culinary, five. You know, the property maintenance is kind of a catch-all, right? So, I mean, kids who might be interested in more in hands-on, carpentry, HVAC kinds of things, might be interested in that initially. But, again, that's going to be something that we'll need to see what the level of interest is. And I do believe that over time, if Leicester's plan moves forward as it's intended with adding electrical and plumbing and things like that, we know that there's been interest of students who otherwise were applying to Asabet and not getting access the last few years, who may have had interests like that. But, traditionally, our kids have been spread across all the different things that they've had access to at Asabet over time.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you for the presentation and for being here tonight on a non-school committee night. Definitely appreciate that and taking the time with us tomorrow to give us a tour. I know, we just referenced town meeting and the annual budget presentations that we make annually in May. Couple of years ago, I think eight of the ten questions from that town meeting weren't about the budget. It was about how is Shrewsbury going to find more opportunities for career and technical education, you know, with the situation at Asabet and with Shrewsbury being a non-CTE district? So, we do have a lot in common there. And this district has made some really great efforts around CTE and opening some doors around lunch and learns and job shadowing. But, we've always said we could never replicate the vocational offering, because we don't have the space, right? And I loved seeing in the enrollment projection slide, you said there's plenty of space, right? Which is a problem we'd love to have in our high school. I do appreciate the depth of the offering, especially around culinary. Having a student that's a freshman at a culinary-focused college and just received her serve-safe manager certification, that is a huge advantage, especially at a high school level, to be offered something like that. So, just based on my recent interests, that's great to see. And in terms of the costs, I know what's being proposed aligns with Tantascas from what I saw in Dr. Sawyer's memo, which is just under fourteen thousand. Asabet tuition this year is about under twenty thousand for the, there's fourteen students right now that are seniors, I think we said earlier today when I was talking to Dr. Sawyer. I think there was one that maybe got in towards the end of last year from when I remember. So, it's really exciting that this opportunity is before us today. I'm really looking forward to seeing more live on your campus tomorrow. So, thank you so much, Dr. Sawyer. Further questions?
No, I want to thank Mr. Packard and Dr. Stig and Mr. Swata to come this evening and sharing this information with us and approaching us about the partnership. There's a lot of ways that this could be a real win-win for both communities. I think that was laid out very clearly. You know, we're kind of in the due diligence phase now, for sure. Now that this information is there, we'll look forward to the school committee members who can get the tour tomorrow. And, you know, I'm sure there'll be questions that we resolve over the next couple of weeks to see if this is something that can move. to see if this is something that can move forward with as a potential way to connect Shrewsbury kids who are interested in a vocational technical education, who have not been able to get access to that at ASABET, to be able to access some Chapter Seventy-four programming at Lester as an alternative. So really appreciate your time and all the effort you put into the presentation. Thank you, and we'll look forward to the ongoing conversation.
Thank you so much. All right, the next item on our agenda is under Finance and Operations. It is a discussion regarding the FY26 draft budget priorities, guidance, and calendar. The document titled Priorities and Guidance for FY26 Budget Development provides the community with information about the school committee's priorities for the FY26 School Department budget. It also is designed to provide guidance to the Superintendent of Schools and School Department Administration regarding development of its initial fiscal year twenty-six School Department budget proposal. Ms. Fritz and Ms. Hefferman are members of the Finance Subcommittee. They work with Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Girardi, develop the enclosed drafts for the FY26 Budget Priorities and Guidance and Calendar for FY26. The draft documents have been presented for discussion and feedback. And with that, hand it to Ms. Fritz.
I think I'll kick us off. Yeah, so these documents, as I, mostly to remind the community, are really designed, when I think about the budget process, maybe people think of May Town Meeting, but for us, it starts right about now. And so this is really about setting some overarching priorities and guidance to allow Mr. Girardi and his team, along with Dr. Sawyer and the entire leadership team, to kind of start to pull together the budget for the next year, and really just trying to lift up what's most important and what's most essential that we'd be thinking about. And so while I won't spend a lot of time on the budget calendar, that's helpful for people to sort of see big picture, how long, how long this process, this process is. I think what I would point, point folks to is that how important I think it has been that we have a strategic plan that's outlined some of our key, key areas of focus and our commitments to the community, and the budget should be a reflection of those commitments if we've, if we're doing our job well, and if things can happen in a planful way, and sometimes they can, and sometimes we get thrown curveballs. But when I look forward to what we think is important, I think it's, you know, for the next year, it's making sure that all of our students, particularly on that, you know, educational excellence for all students, that we're thinking about all of our students, and some, as we were talking about even earlier tonight, about what their, what their future goals are, some have different needs, and we gotta be paying attention to those. Certainly, our English language learner population has already been mentioned tonight, is one of the areas where we wanna be focusing on and understanding what's gonna happen at the state level, what are reimbursements like, what is that, how does that demographic shift? But you will find on page two of the priorities document, or priorities and guidance document, that fundamentally, this is about us ensuring that we have transparency with our community, particularly in terms of our override statement with the community, that we are well, now many years into this, I think that I remember the year after the override and having, again, Mr. Collins here, who made, you know, an extra showing this evening, and Dr. Sawyer saying this budget is like nothing else because we have some predictability and stability. And so that has continued to be incredibly important for us. And yet we also know we're sort of nearing the end of an agreement there, and it's important that we communicate to the community how, at times, how challenging it can be to deliver the high-quality education as costs do go up, and inflationary pressures are just as true in our industry of public education as they are anywhere else. That notwithstanding, I think we know what some of those, those key needs are, and so in particular, I would, I would call out, obviously, our, you know, understanding our enrollment and our class size. I think that is one of the levers that we, as a district, can pull and move on if we were ever in a pinch, and we're clearly not hoping to be there, and so that's an important guidepost for us. Second, that we really look at advancing of that literacy initiative in all the different ways that that impacts our students, whether it's on, you know, professional development or literacy tutors or the, you know, special ed programming, and all the different ways that that is important for us. Meeting our benchmarks for our, our young people who maybe have some extra needs, whether it's social, emotional, behavioral, or those English language learners, and thinking about, in particular, that mandated services for English language learners. We've heard a lot from Ms. Manos over time about how the complexity that that has brought, and that DESI has brought to us as a district to deliver those services. Of course, the Chapter Seventy-four programming, and thinking about CTE as another area, so whether it's budget that thinks about maybe a potential new partnership with Lester, or the, you know, litany of other programs that we've tried to put together at the high school around career and technical exposure for, frankly, at the high school, but even at Oak, Career Days and all these other wonderful things that are, that are happening, how do we keep them, keep them going? And that is important both with, again, within our high school and any other partnerships that we might wanna think of. And then the other one for us to be thinking about is how we, as a district, are thinking through the issue of fees. Interesting how it came up tonight with our high school students about, about our fees, but how can we, you know, think about holding the line and potentially trying to, trying to move in a slightly different direction? But of course, we'll have to be at a lot farther into the budget cycle before we make some of those choices. So with that, Ms. Fritz, I don't know if you have anything more you'd like to add. I think we proposed sort of some guidance there, and clearly, some of the guidance is really straightforward, like, you know, assure we meet our collective bargaining agreement obligations, right? And so there's some basic benchmarks of the budgeting process that you can find on page three of that document. I don't know if you have anything else you'd wanna add.
I think you've covered it well. It's, you know, keeping to the four corners of the agreement that we have for the override, making sure that we're providing a transparent set of guidelines for the district, and looking at what resources are going to be needed, and I think there's A through G. We did have more, and we talked about it in the Subcommittee, that it was, other things were embedded, and that we should really be looking at these high-level areas that we feel, and it's not just the school committee, it's not just central offices, a ton of work that goes into strategic plan and information from our educators, our principals. So I think this is a very nice way of laying out our roadmap as we go forward into the next budget cycle. We'd like to hear your feedback on that as well.
Thank you both for putting this together. I think you've done a really nice job of summarizing our priorities and kind of outlining the key district needs that align well with our strategic planning work, and the assumptions and guidance that you've set forth seem to really hit the nail on the head with regard to, you know, the things that we need to keep our eye on as we move into the next budget cycle. I know we will be voting on this at the next meeting, but thank you for the work on this, and we'll take a look at it over the next couple of weeks and get back to you if we have any further additional comments or feedback.
Mr. Wensky, I did forget one thing. It's mentioned in here, but maybe hasn't been stated as publicly previously. We talk about having a finance consultant in our, in our calendar, I apologize to not having explained that first. So, you know, I think as a district, as we are preparing for future years and conversations about how are our educational needs either changing or developing, I think of post-COVID and lots of things that feel just a little bit different, whether it's lunchtime and the number of young people that are now get lunch, but, you know, we have a state mandated program and some other, or state funding, to the ELL program, to, you know, our career technical education and the ASABET change. I mean, a lot has changed for us in the last five years. So as we project and look forward, the district is in a position where we are moving forward with trying to bring on a financial consultant to help us do some of the modeling of our expenses and what those expenses will look like, what will be some key drivers and some risks as you create any sort of model, and where some changes could happen, whether demographic or town size or population, of all sorts of different things. So there is embedded into the calendar an opportunity or two where you will see, you know, that that consultant is either engaging with the school committee, most certainly in a public forum, probably also in some sort of workshop, but also will be working, of course, in the background with Mr. Girardi and his team on that. So I just didn't, if someone was looking at this for the first time and wondering what that was about, I think it's important. While relative, important for this one year is also really a multi-year look ahead for us, so will be hopefully guiding us over multiple years. Sorry, Mr. Wensky.
I'm glad that you brought up the financial consultant, because I think it's really important. I think that this is a great document to, for us to work on, and it stays true to the three priorities of our educational excellence and the enhanced well-being of all, and the optimization of resources, and having a financial consultant help and come on board so that we can really stick to these priorities is a huge thing for us, and I think it's, like you said, it's not just looking at this year, it's looking at multiple years ahead and how we can change this year and kind of adapt, and there may be things that we don't necessarily think about that somebody would come in and say, well, this is what is trending and whatnot. So I think this is a strong document. I can't believe we're already at budget season again, but here we be. But thank you for working on this.
It's the never-ending budget cycle. Brief pause during the summer, but, but yeah, thank you both for putting this together. I agree. I think these priorities are spot on. I'm glad we are discussing the financial consultant piece of it, because we've now finished those four years of the override commitment. We gotta think ahead as to what the needs of the district will be, and I think it's important for the public to understand how our budget schedule works. I mean, I know we publish it every year, but in the interest of transparency, I think, you know, love to, you know, get feedback if needed before our vote next week. But all the dates and meetings are in the packet for the public to review, and certainly look forward to any feedback that might, might come our way. So thank you, Dr. Sawyer.
No, I think, you know, Mr. Girardi and I, I think it's a clear document that lays out what the priorities are, and it will certainly assist us as we start to begin the work of putting together what will ultimately be the initial proposal presented in early February, so, and with a lot of work between now and then, of course. And I concur in terms of the financial consultant, I think that will provide some really valuable information to us as we look ahead to future years, as well as what we're doing in the coming fiscal year. So appreciate that, and we'll look forward to having you finalize this at your next meeting, and, you know, work is already underway. So thank you.
All right. Thanks so much. All right. The next item on our agenda is under Old Business. It's a vote on the superintendent's goals. Each year, Superintendent of Schools presents performance goals to the school committee as part of the evaluation process. At our October ninth meeting, Dr. Sawyer presented his proposed goals. Based on feedback from the committee, Dr. Sawyer is in the process of adjusting his proposed professional practice goal, and an updated memo was sent under separate, separate cover to us. So with that, Dr. Sawyer, you wanna go through any revisions?
I think just briefly, I mean, I took the feedback the committee provided at the last meeting and made the professional practice goal a bit more expansive relative to the kinds of skills that ultimately I'm trying to build on, that hopefully have a positive impact on the district as well in its particular area. Made it a little broader around communications in terms of improving the quality and coherence of our district-level communications and finding ways to, you know, most effectively solicit feedback from different stakeholders. So there's some language in there about doing some measuring of that before we assess it in early April relative with a goal of at least eighty percent satisfaction level of people's, stakeholders' perceptions of that, and looking at, you know, what is it that we can do to look at, you know, what other districts and organizations do around exemplary practices around communication? You know, what's our capacity, and are there ways to enhance that? And looking at some different ways to use multiple opportunities and forms to both share information and solicit feedback. So that's all contained in the memo, and I'd be happy to receive any feedback relative to that, and ask that you approve the goals this evening.
Great, thank you. Colleagues, questions or comments?
I just certainly wanna thank you, Dr. Sawyer, for taking another, another peek at this one, and I am pretty happy with where we're landing, and it's a, it already feels like a busy year, and so I have to set some goals. But thank you.
Further comments, questions? Great. All right, there being none, we need to vote that, so I need a motion that the committee review, that's reviewed, and, I'm sorry, the committee vote to approve the superintendent's goals for 2024, 2025 school year as presented.
So moved, second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is under New Business. It's a vote for ASABET Valley Collaborative Board of Directors appointment. The mission of the ASABET Valley Collaborative, ABC, is to provide effective and efficient services to meet current and evolving needs of the member communities to promote student success and community integration. The ABC Board of Directors meets monthly during the school year and more often as needed. Each year, the committee must vote to appoint the superintendent as representative to the ASABET Valley Collaborative Board of Directors. With that, Dr. Sawyer, any comments?
This is fairly pro forma. This has to happen every year under state law and regulation, and I'll be pleased to represent the district again on the ASABET board.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay. So therefore, I need a motion that the committee vote to appoint Dr. Joseph M. Sawyer, Superintendent of Schools, as his representative to the ASABET Valley Collaborative Board of Directors for the 2024, 2025 school year.
So moved, second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Approval of Minutes. The minutes from the school committee meeting held on October ninth, 2024 is enclosed. Colleagues, any revisions or edits?
Yeah.
There being none, they will be accepted as written. Thank you. All right, we do need to go into executive session. Therefore, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session. A for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Sections Twenty-one, A, seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid, purpose seven, open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Sections Twenty-two, F, and G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. B for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one, A, three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or a Cafeteria Workers Association, and C for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one, A, two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, non-union clerical, and support staff and/or administrators, purpose two, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and return to open a session only for the purpose of adjoining for the evening. May I have a motion?
So moved, second?
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote is required. Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Boucher?
Aye.
Ms. Shreefoor?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you, and good night.